It's now 6:30. We call this meeting as a Manchester by the Sea Select Ward to Order. And Lenny?
Yep.
Or Anselse?
Yes.
Anne's here.
And John is here.
This meeting is being recorded. And first item is public comments on non-agenda items. Are there? Greg, is there anyone?
Not seen anyone raising their hand.
Hey. Um. I don't have a chairman's report. I do have a suggestion for the action items, which is that at a future meeting, well before the town meeting, I'd like us to consider amending the town by law about heavy construction noise to exclude the LCD. That won't please the people on Mill Street, but they are some distance from most of the LCD. And construction often begins earlier than eight in the morning.
Yes. Commercial construction, seven o'clock. Fosset at six. Blasting women being inside.
No.
You're talking relative to noise, specifically noise.
This is not general noise. This is an amendment. It lists a series of things that are noisy. I don't have the bylaw at my fingertips, but...
Heavy construction.
Be fleshed out.
There's the traffic as well, heavy equipment or...
I don't believe it includes traffic, but we could, we could, I will get it on the action item and I will, I will make sure that everybody sees what the, what the current bylaw is.
Also in the actions, I just, we had a discussion on Ocean Street like a meeting or two ago, and until I see something on a warrant, I'd like to kind of keep it on our action item list because we don't have them all. And then I just had a memory fog and couldn't remember where we were with the electricity aggregation. Did we finish that, negotiate that, or?
So it's, it's in process.
Still in process.
So we have the consulting firm.
Right.
They just sent me the other day a draft.
Okay. I'd like to see that on the actions just so, because it was two, almost two years ago that the voters approved it, so we have an action to do something. And I think that was a bit off of mind for me.
State did say, I think, or somebody said, some group said it was supposed to go a lot faster.
Correct. So the DPU has, has approved just November a new streamlined process. So we're one of the first to go through that process.
Okay.
So we'll see how streamlined it is. We'll be optimistic.
And the other thing I'd like to make sure is on this is the water quality on Forrester Road or lack thereof.
Speaking of water, did we ever lift, we never lifted the water ban we had enacted. Is that something we should consider or are we still in a, I haven't heard boo about the drought in weeks, so.
Let me check on that. I don't think they've officially lifted it.
We certainly put it on only because the state required it.
Right, right. So we may want to just keep an action to track, you know, when to lift it and so we don't forget it.
Anything else for us not to forget? Okay. First item on the agenda is the Manchester Yacht Club alcohol license agreement. Is there any? The yacht folks should be better about reminding us when they change their officers, which they do every two years. The officers who had been listed were a couple years ago. Any discussion on this? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol license change of, what is it?
Manager and officer.
Change of managers.
Second.
Session? Comments? Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay. The next item is to eliminate parking within 20 feet of the crosswalk on Central Street by Seaside One. I think we all know what that one was about. Is there any discussion?
I had a, well, just a question, I guess. If we moved that crosswalk back this way, would we still lose the same number, like up to the corner, would we still lose the same number of spots?
My concern, I think, would be, Chuck's concern, is the vehicles exiting the driveway.
Oh, okay.
What happens if we eliminated that crosswalk altogether? We have one on the other side.
Chuck was not in favor of that because we already eliminated one up the street.
Well, I'd like that one back. I'd like that one back.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, obviously your conversation would have to come to Chuck.
I think businesses are going to lose one or two spots by following that 20 feet, okay, which will impact the Bluebird and Jack's, the Baba Shack. And we already have a crosswalk just on the other side of the street. We can have this discussion with Chuck. I mean, the two of them seem redundant as close as they are to each other.
I think there's two issues. I agree with you. I think there's a short-term need to do something right away, okay, which I think this suggestion is directed at, but I also think we need a longer-term look at where the appropriate place for a crosswalk is. I agree with you, that's not the place.
Right.
It's, I use it almost every single day. It is an extremely dangerous spot. Even by eliminating the 20-foot sightline, it's still, there's a curve, it's a bad sightline, and I agree with you, the one near Morse Court was honestly, I jaywalk and that's where I cross because it's safer. So I do think we need a longer-term discussion, but in the short term, I agree, we kind of need to do something. However, my question is, in order to lose as few parking spaces as possible, it was recommended to us that we paint lines on both sides of that street to delineate where the parking spaces are.
I agree.
Because the number of parking spaces is purely a factor of who gets there first in the morning and where they happen to park, and if they are not in the right spot, you automatically lose a spot. So a can of paint, okay, I mean...
I agree. I think we could lose 20% of the parking.
We're losing parking every single day for no other reason than we haven't painted the lines.
So if you notice under the buy-hire...
Yes, you've got it marked off.
It's marked off, and that was the plan to do on either side.
We need both sides, the parking spaces marked off, and then, Brian, I think that will alleviate some of the angst, but to your point, I think we need a longer-term solution.
But in the short term, like when we stop putting cones out there right now?
Yeah, we have cones up.
Yeah, let's do that until we come up with that, the long-term plan.
Yeah, because I hate to see those spots go away, but I do, you know, we gotta do something.
Well, we had an incident.
Right, right.
We have an incident.
And we're lucky that was just, ultimately was a...
And that was with the driver under the wheel.
So this is two spots?
Two spots on either side of the road.
Which is on either side, before the crosswalk going eastbound and before the crossbound and before the crosswalk going westbound.
That was my bracket.
Okay, right.
The bigger issue is when you're on, standing by the real estate office, when you're facing the harbor, that's where it's dangerous coming.
The westbound, the westbound traffic. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, heading towards Beverly Farms.
They can't see you.
You can't see the cars coming, they can't see you. Crossing the other way is really, you know, it's not bad, but, but when you're trying to cross towards the harbor, it's, you're taking, you're taking your life in your hands.
Yeah, so maybe down the road, that's not the best place for it to be.
Exactly.
As long as we have it now, until we can meet with Chuck, I would advocate just putting cones up.
Yeah, right. Let's do something now and then look at it. Yeah.
And including paint, I would really ask that we paint the lines. I mean...
Yeah, so previous boards had a different philosophy about painting parking spots, but we're happy to do it.
But the experts, the experts we hired recommended that, the, you know, so...
People need to be, I mean, I pull it. I live there, okay? And if I'm the first one there, I try always, I try to pull up as far up as...
As far as you can.
That's my spot, and I get pissed when someone else is there, but...
Not everybody does that.
But there are times when you, like you'll come home and say, you know, look at these three wasted spots because they're not...
And there aren't a lot of people driving the little tiny smart cars who pack themselves in.
Pick them up and turn them around.
Okay, so I think what we want to do is put the cones in now, block off so that it's safe for the moment, and get Chuck in for our next meeting with a plan to either remove a crosswalk or at least move one.
I would ask that he also consult with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee because they had sent a letter to Chief Fitzgerald. They may have, already have suggestions on the appropriate placement for the crosswalk, so just, they should be included.
When, when does they leave next?
I'm not sure, actually. I'm not sure, it's, they haven't had a meeting yet this month, so it's not posted.
So it was six.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think he can, I think, you know, Chuck can reach out to them in the interim and make sure that they, he gets their feedback prior to our next meeting for the next two weeks, because I think they have discussed it.
There was one further west, right?
Yeah, there was by Mochukla.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one that was removed that, quite frankly, where I jaywalk, because the sightlines are good, the sunshine, you know, depend, and I, what I understand, the reason why it was taken away is something about the sidewalk not being wide enough to be ADA compliant, and that's why they took the crosswalk away, but I don't understand why we couldn't have a non-compliant ADA, you know, not ADA compliant crosswalk. Is that illegal or, I mean, it was there. I thought it would have been grandfathered in even though we paved over it or whatever. That was my understanding why they took it away. The sidewalk was too thin.
Every crosswalk is supposed to have a ramp up.
A curb cut of some sort.
Yeah.
Right. And that, it's real narrow on the...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, how much of the street would we take away, you know? We had to make that sidewalk ADA compliant, but from a sightline standpoint, it's a, it's a very nice spot.
All right, well, let's look at some options.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. What is the next? I think we have a resolution on that, basically. The harbor regulations for commercial moorings. I'm sorry, I sent you 47 copies, but people kept making crazy suggestions. Are there, John, you look as if you have lots of comments.
Well, I do, but then as I read it down further and further, then I say, oh, that comment up there doesn't apply, so it looks like I have a lot, but really, I just, just have a couple, and thank you very much for working on this and to put together so many versions. I mean, that takes a little bit of time, but I understand you got comments and then more comments and say, hey, this makes sense. So I've got just really a couple, and one is that I think all of these are moorings. You say service moorings up on the top, but I think it's never referred to as service moorings beyond, there are moorings that are, I guess, are involved with the, that are involved with the, with the two marinas.
Yep.
But the question would be, right now, the payment is in full, that also includes the waterway permit.
The waterway permit is paid by the boatyards to the town.
That's right. Now, my question is...
The, the payment from the boater to the boatyard to the marina has to be invited at a certain date, or the marina will say, okay, next person on the line.
Understood. So say the slips that are, excuse me, and behind Bluebird, those people all have to pay a waterway fee.
Yes.
And that's separate from the slips, and I don't know who owns those slips.
Cobra, is that it?
Yeah, yeah.
She Rock.
Okay, so are those two different entities? In other words, the waterway bill is paid to, paid to the harbor master?
The slips are, there's a difference in state law between slips and bottom moorings, which is very significant. If it's, if you approach the boat from the land on a ramp, that's one thing. And when Manchester Marine first put in their marina with the slips, they had had lands there, and they dredged it so that they could put in those slips. Bottom, water bottom in Massachusetts belongs to the people and...
I think, I think...
I'm just wondering, we've got two ways, two ways we're administering some moorings. Most of the moorings are, we're paying, you pay to the harbor master, and then for these, you know, the number of moorings, whatever winds up in this provisional pool is being paid in a different way, and I'm just wondering if they can't all be dealt with in the same fashion? That's all but your saying?
Well, there are two parts to the payment in the, on the provisional. Part of it is for the tying it to the bottom, and part of it is the part that the boatyards are renting to boaters.
Okay.
Now, we could...
I mean, I just thought it, you understand the rationale I had here, you know, and I was just wondering, why can't they all be dealt with the same way? Also, I don't know, somebody with a 25-foot boat is in theory having to pay for a 40-foot slip.
No, that's, that's, the reason that it's done that way is that those moorings, those boats, moorings, take up the space of a 45-foot boat.
I understand, I understand.
So I would like to see the town get paid for a 45-foot boat, even if the person's renting it only as a 25-foot boat.
Okay, okay.
So that's...
So it's an observation I make, but I was not aware of the subtlety or not-so-subtle difference between a, between a mooring and a slip. So, and...
Brian had his hand up for a minute. Brian, did you take your hand down or you want to comment on that?
Yeah, comment on that topic? Well, I was just going to say the boatyards have always paid annually the waterway fee for their moorings. The intention was that they would continue to pay for the waterway fee to the town for all of their service and transient moorings, and that the people who are assigned to the other moorings held by the boatyards would pay their waterway for their boat being in that spot. And then the agreement between those boaters and the boatyards, that's a, that's a separate topic. But the town would collect a waterway fee for every single one of those moorings.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
And my, my concern there is that we're shorting the town because those things take up the space of two 45-foot boats. Right.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, that's just an observation. Appreciate the comments on that. Second, second question I had is, do all of those folks that wind up on provisional moorings, they must pay their fee in full at the start of the season? Okay, and we have to know that, because that's really a financial interaction between...
The boatyard will let, well, the boatyard will let the harbor master know if they don't have their payment.
Okay, all right. Just so long as it's in advance, there was some comment there with, I think you had made the comment, Greg, with regard to billing disputes or problems with people who might be on moorings, and I don't, I certainly do not want the mooring fee to be part of that discussion. In other words, I'll pay you monthly and then all of a sudden they don't pay it in August or something. Okay. And the last question I had, and I think it can be straightened out, is that I guess moorings can be added or removed at, you know, each year, and it could be any number. I mean, they could reduce the number of service moorings they have if they feel that we don't need to have, I don't know, 11 or 11, whatever it is, whatever the number is. Okay, all right. But there could be, if, if something is removed, if a mooring is removed, it must be there for at least three years, and I understand that, somebody...
No, the more recent draft says, when, when I got the comments from Manchester Marine, they did not object to having to keep a mooring in the provisional mooring pool until the assignee had enough capital to return it, so...
Okay, all right, that is subsequent to this.
Yes, I...
Indefinitely?
Yes, indefinitely. There was, they saw and did not comment.
There or until vacated by an assignee?
Until it's vacated by an assignee.
Now, when you say it, it could be any mooring. If they want to have another mooring back, whoever, whatever person that's got a provisional mooring, it's, it's a pool of moorings, and so whichever one gets vacated, they get that mooring back if they wanted to put it back into the service mooring category. And so it's not designated a specific mooring. It's whatever mooring becomes available first, then you've satisfied that requirement. That's not necessarily clear here, so there might be a word or two that needs to go in there, so.
Have we done this down? Please. So we're talking about moorings that the marinas control.
Yep, they have, they have permits for it.
They have permits for it, yeah. And at times, they would want, the potential exists that it's become surplus, as it were, they don't need a mooring, tying up boats, and they could then go to the, the pool of... So do, do they pay for those moorings upfront?
Yes.
All right. So the question I have is then, so the town's got their money for those moorings, right? And then all they have to do is they can try to recoup some of those, those dollars, amortize the cost of whatever it is for the months it's going to be there.
They're going to make a big profit on it, but...
Or, and I'm not a big advocate of government intervention here, but why can't we cap that at like 15 or 20%? Basically, the cost of their money, administrative costs, because it is a town asset.
Well, it is and it isn't.
Well, those folks would be of no interest to anybody if they were in the boatyards parking lot.
It's a public asset, not necessarily a town asset.
Okay. Again, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just trying to think that you don't want, you know, if it's, why can't the, if the town is getting their money, that's what we care about, but we don't want someone...
Well, I think we care about two things.
Well, the problem, the other problem is we're bound by the state, and he sees that the moorings have to come from the list, that's...
Well, no, I understand that, but some of the concerns that you had, as I recall, is, all right, this is what the moorings are going to cost you, too rich for your blood, we'll go on to someone else.
Yeah.
Okay?
What do we do?
Tailor that, as it were.
The risk they run is if it's too high, they go through the whole list?
And they don't...
And they don't get, you know, there's some moorings that do not go...
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to boil this down and simplify it as best I can.
So that brings up a different issue, though. The moorings are rare and sought after, so we don't want to see moorings go unused for multiple years at a time, right?
It wouldn't, probably wouldn't be multiple, because they set the price every year.
Right. I'm just wondering if there's a way for a buy-on to, you know, monitor that. We wouldn't want moorings to go empty, right, unused, and I'm not sure how this addresses that angle.
Well, it's, since it's not capped, it's strongly in the boatyard's interest to set a price where they will sell.
Yeah. That's all, and the market will determine that.
No, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Right, I guess what I'm getting at is most marinas, like, you know, if you don't use your slip, you're allowed to have your slip empty for a year, and if you don't put a boat in it, the following year you'll lose the slip. So I'm wondering if that type of, you know, industry standard process can be applied here to the moorings. You can't keep a mooring empty for two, three years, that's just, that's not right, you know?
So you're saying somebody's paying for it, but they're not using it?
Yeah. That's the scenario I'm worried about.
No, nobody would be paying for it.
The marinas are still paying.
Somebody would have to pay for it.
The marinas are going to pay for it by January 15th. They're going to pay for all the moorings.
Yeah, but they're going to mark it up several thousand dollars.
The town's getting their money, that's not what I'm concerned about.
But they're not getting that money.
If, if moorings go unused, the list doesn't get any shorter, right?
Under what circumstances?
I guess, yeah.
You're concerned that the marinas will set the price so high that no one will...
I'm asking, is that, you know...
I think, I think we have to go back. If they don't get the $6,000 that they want out of it, that's not in their interest. They know they're going to have to pay us the, what, I don't know, $2,000 for the, whatever 40-foot boat is, $1,500 or something.
But the way I see it is they're going to set it at so much a foot, probably whatever their slips are.
Right.
And if you go out there in July and August, there's not, there's not a bunch of empty slips out there, so...
I think what I'm worried about is the conversation, or I think it might have been a recent update, I apologize, I think I got some of the updates mixed up, but there was something about keeping the mooring assignment until, except a regular mooring assignment offered by the harbor master. So basically, someone keeping, not keeping their mooring assignment year over year over year. I just want to make sure that if that situation occurs, the person actually has a boat in the mooring, not just keeping the assignment because they can afford to pay a fee. You know what I'm saying? I wish I could, I apologize, I didn't have the language here.
You want to make sure there's a boat on the...
There's a boat on it.
Make sure there's a boat on the mooring. So even if someone is paying the boatyard, some, these things are rare, right? People, there are some people willing to pay just because, oh, I'm going to get a boat, you know, I didn't get it this year, I'm going to get it next year, you know? Lots of things happen with boats, and I just don't want to see any empty moorings.
I think buy-on handles that the way he does all of the other boats.
That's why I didn't quite see that there...
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
So I would say, Kathy, the way to handle that is the same way we handle every other single mooring. If you have a mooring, you pay every single year, you must use your mooring at least every other year for 45 days.
Right, yes. Okay.
And we just apply the same, I mean, I would assume we just apply the same rule to those moorings as we would any other mooring in the harbor.
Yes, I'm very comfortable with that. I didn't, I guess maybe I didn't pick up on this before, this branding of a provisional mooring program, which I like, but I didn't see that language in here. I like that language, I'm perfectly fine if we just treat it the same way.
It's in the regular rules and rates, and we just apply it consistently.
Right.
Okay, so what you're saying is that someone who had, that, someone who has paid the boatyard for the use of a float space, of a float space, would lose it if they didn't put a boat out?
Every other year, yeah, for 45 days. Whatever the rule is, I just want the same rule to apply to those moorings.
So the marina still holds onto the mooring, but the, their sublettee...
Goes back into the pool.
Doesn't, doesn't continue to rate, and the next person on the list has a chance.
Yes, yes, yes.
I guess that's the intersection of what was here and...
Current rules.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right.
Further discussion? Comments?
Thank you for putting all this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, my only comment, which I already gave you, was about the threshold of the 20%.
Yeah, and I, I...
Yeah, I saw you fix that, so that's, yeah, so that's great, thanks.
Yes.
Sorry, Nick Leides, Fortune Reservoir Road, Lockham Pass, General Manager, Manchester Marine. I'm curious what the 2.5% change to, that's the version I'd seen.
Okay, what, I originally said that we don't want to see the boatyards put up enormous changes, so we, okay, 2.5% is a number of year-over-year increase that the town lives with, so that's where that number came from. And Jeff suggested that maybe that wasn't, didn't reflect the cost of material in the, in the water at... material in the, in the water, on the water. So I added the percent change in the mooring fees, so that it would be 2.5% plus whatever change the mooring fees had.
Oh, so that additionally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
So if our mooring fees, my concern was if our mooring fees go up 20% some year, you guys can still capture that 20% plus your 2.5.
I understand.
You know what I mean, so you wouldn't.
I'll throw that number out to Bayon here.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the provisional mooring program as.
Presented on January 5th.
Yes.
The January 5th edition.
Version XXX, okay.
You would think somebody who'd done this before would have the sense to put in the date on.
With the addition of the, what do you want, what do you call it, the?
Use it or lose it provision.
Use it or lose it.
Okay.
That's in the general.
Which, yeah, so that's in the general. Okay.
Okay.
Third second.
Second.
Jeff.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, John says yes?
John says yes.
Okay, I think the boatyards get to use the moorings, and the mooring, the users will come off the list in a rational fashion.
Thank you, I appreciate you putting that together.
Yep.
Thanks, Bayon.
Thank you, Emily.
The next is discussion items. First item here is the waterfront event permit. I have trouble dealing with things that I get late on Monday afternoon. And I don't think this is something that we absolutely urgently have to have done in January. And I would like to put this off perhaps for two meetings. And I want to be sure that what we've come up with for a waterfront event permit covers many, there are lots of events that happen on the harbor. The cardboard boat event. And I'm not sure that the level of regulations that this proposes is appropriate for everything that happens on the waterfront. I would like to get a little more. And I'd like a little bit of clarity on what is a waterfront event.
The definition of a waterfront event?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the scope of applying whatever rules we're going to set up? I think, I had sent Greg a note this morning that attended the meeting on the, that everybody, you know, came, where everybody came together to discuss options. I didn't, this looked like a short list, but not everything that we talked about, so I wasn't sure what we were going to be discussing tonight. For example, we talked about if there were public safety details, that the event sponsor would have to pay for them. That was one thing that stuck in my mind. So I just felt like this document, to your point, it was a short list, but not necessarily everything we would want to discuss.
Among the things that concern me, there are, the high school sailing team, for example, when they have races, they put it out on social media. It's an on-the-water event. Do we need to have the coast guard involved?
If they're a good team, no.
I will.
Great. The definition of the event is the.
It's a good point.
And there's, every April or so, Bayon does a really good event where people bring in expired flares, and you get to play with flares, which most people don't get to do in the North River.
I didn't know about that, Ben.
Yeah, and. Anybody like?
I have no problem with this, I mean, like you say, this would not press for time right now.
No, and it wasn't clear to me how this kind of gets integrated into the special event permit.
Well, just massage that.
You have to massage it a lot, I would think, because, I mean, I would say there's a crossover, but.
I think that Bayon and Cheryl would have to work.
They would.
We'll all send our comments to Greg. And take this one up later. Okay, off the water, Cape and Transportation Authority.
So we've had discussions in the past, we had a meeting with CADA representatives come in, and I think it's decision time in terms of would we like to proceed? They're willing and able to offer us some services. It's, as you know, it'd be a shifting of dollars. So the dollars that we currently pay to the MBTA, you're allowed to shift that to your local regional transit authority. So it's not new dollars, it's just taking existing dollars and shifting it towards CADA instead of MBTA. And I think there's a way to supplement our current services to offer an expansion of service. So if you're willing to take the next steps, I would have CADA draft up a formal proposal that would then have them come back before you, and it is a decision of the select board to make that move. So you could review their proposal and then make a decision at that time. So if you have some thoughts on the shape of the service, that would be helpful to have. They presented a couple, three options the last time they were here. So we can fine tune those and have you make a final decision.
As I recall, and I'm looking at the notes from, when were they, August 5th, I guess it was, three days is what we could get.
Yes.
And it would fit in, and any more than that, now it becomes incremental to us. But that was less than whatever we're, what is it, $150,000 we're paying the MBTA. Three days is cost like, I don't know, $110 or something, or something less. So that's what it would be, three, three days of service. Obviously, I think it can be any three we desire, but that's a little bit further down the road.
And then I think at that point, once we know what those three days of service are, see a way to come and start adjusting your schedules.
I think the key thing was, is then we can adjust schedules and run a little bit, in the summer anyway, run to like 6 o'clock or something.
And then we would supplement it with our own bands to expand.
Yeah.
Daily hours.
Right.
Yep.
It's like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah.
So consensus is yes, Greg, please go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, the community center.
Want to start off, do you want to start off?
Yeah, I'll start off. Actually, after we spoke, Greg, on Thursday, I ran it to Edward.
Okay.
He's onboard, let's just.
Right, so we have certainly spoken in the past about using that building for.
Public bathrooms?
Public bathrooms is number one.
Yeah. Welcoming center.
Welcoming center.
Yeah.
And then.
Harbor master office.
At least, I'd like to see that as a temporary fix for the harbor master's office. My ultimate goal would see the harbor master's office in the harbor.
Yeah.
We're working real hard to create a first-class waterfront. Have the harbor master's office, it ought to be a crown and jewel, but it certainly is in the right direction, so. But maybe it's a winter office, depending on what we have designed, whatever the design comes out.
Yeah.
Regarding the.
And it can be used for other events and other rooms.
Parks and records.
I certainly manage that.
Coming up with some other items, shuffleboard.
It'd be generic office that could be used for other things down the road, so that's fine. What's, what's the, there's going to be some budgetary consideration in all of this? Because this is a lease or something, yes?
Well, yes, I've been told it will be very user-friendly. We haven't talked real numbers at this point. We had one number, and I told them that didn't work. So I think we're in the $1,000, $1,500 range, is that what we talked about, Greg?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay.
And we'll just confirm that with.
But it's incremental to our budget.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it is, yes.
But that's not a crazy.
No, I think it's real.
What about as far as retrofitting to?
Yeah, these old improvements.
That's, that's a discussion we can have with the landlord. Obviously, he can do it cheaper than we can do it.
Yeah.
And I, two years ago, when we first had this, when the new senator first came into the discussion mode, he was willing to pay for the public restrooms. Whether or not that's still on the table, I don't know. I think we kept around, maybe we could put in $30,000 or $50,000, I think, to do the right way of ADA compliance and restrooms there. So that's, I think that at some point, once we have the decision we're going to do this, then we can ask Nate to just do some preliminary budgeting on that and get an idea, maybe a rough sketch idea, we can get over to Edward and see if he can do it cheaper, which he can. He'll do it with his own people when it comes to that.
So just a question, I know we had talked about a welcoming center, but I thought at one point the museum had also, or the historicals, you know, had entertained the concept of a welcoming center there, so. I guess I don't want to interfere with something that either might already be in process, or I just think we need to take that into consideration. What was the museum proposing versus what we might be able to do at the community center? Public bathrooms, to me, are a no-brainer, we've been screaming for that for years. But when it comes to the welcoming center, if the museum has staffing available, that actually might be a better option.
Seems like a better place.
My recollection with that.
Center.
Well, my recollection of that, that came out of the first carnival, first.
Right.
And I guess behind the museum, I haven't seen it, there's a bathhouse, or what is it?
Yes.
Yeah, one of the beach.
The old bathhouse, the idea was to move it over to Mascanomo.
Ah, okay.
All right, and then they realized that's not possible.
It's tough to get it in there.
But as a well, you know, like a nice, but it's certainly something that we can.
I just think we need to discuss that and figure that out. And then my, my third recommendation would be, we really should go back to the facilities strategy that Chuck outlined. What other uses for that space, you know, what other uses or space do we need? And where would that building be a good match? So we shouldn't have to think of it off the fly, it should be part and parcel, something mentioned in the plan.
The other, I think of that as more of a flexible space.
Absolutely, but.
And right now, we have eight floor space for seniors. We have a wired senior space.
Right.
But it's some years from being fully functional, I think. We have to do full fundraising, and so in the short term.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that we not forget that we had a facilities strategy. We should incorporate that thinking broadly into whatever, this is another asset we need to include in that strategy and be thoughtful about short-term or long-term, how we want to use it, that's all.
Yeah, but I think to your point, I mean, the senior center is probably 18 months to two years away. I think if we approach fundraising differently, we can be in the ground real soon. And if not, we're looking at four years as opposed to two years. So, but in the interim, I mean, you have your, where do you have your coffees over at church?
Yeah, that's been running for, I guess, a year, well, not a year and a half, but over a year. And that's good.
I'd feel comfortable, if they like it there, they're comfortable there, but if they want to move over.
That's going along fine.
This became, this became the genesis of the whole thing was senior coffees. This is how this whole thing blew up with senior coffees. And if Jay Savalken can see senior coffees out his window, he'll be happy.
So.
Yep.
I will make, I will make a, I will catch with Edward in the next couple of days, and then you and I will sit with him. All right, and we'll have an agreement to bring back to you people.
Sounds terrific. Okay, the town's administrator recruitment preliminary screening committee. What do we need to do?
So just a quick update, we should have the draft profile by the end of this week. So ideally, we turn that around quickly so that this gets out on the street at the end of next week, the goal. So if, assuming I get it on Friday, I give it all to you. You can give me any comments back, and I can coalesce those and send them right back to them. So if you continue by Monday, assuming that I get it on Friday, that would be very helpful. And then, yeah, as I say, it'll be officially advertised and on the street. And they'll certainly be in a conference called Connect 351. That happens over the 23rd.
Third week of January.
Yes, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, third week of January. And so in addition to that, we have received a number of names for people interested in serving on the screening, preliminary screening committee. And Ann and I were talking, and she felt perhaps that inviting the moderator to serve on that committee as well might be.
So, yeah, before we start talking names, I don't think we've really had a discussion on what we're looking for regarding the townwide residents who might serve. And I also suspect that we'll have more former, former select board members than we have slots. So I think it's customary to not talk about names, but talk about criteria, what are we looking for before we entertain a discussion on, you know, names.
Right, so ideally, you would make the selection at your next meeting.
Right, so I think we need to talk criteria now, that's one of my points. For example, we did discuss, when talking about prior select board members, it would be nice to have select board members who have gone through the process, right? That might be a preferred candidate. If we had, you know, five former select board members and, you know, one or two of them have gone through this before, that, that might be nice, right? You could apply something similar to that to the residents at large, someone who has experienced selecting leaders or hiring leaders versus individual contributors. So that's, that's what I mean by criteria, just as a point of expansion.
I don't, because you've been sitting in that chair way too long. The, it might be nice to find someone who remembers working with a different town administrator.
Well, that's, that's the point here.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Which is reaching 10 years.
So, I mean, we're talking, how long have you been here?
10, 11?
It'll be 12.
Yeah.
All right, so that's people with history.
Like when I was speaking to, who was I speaking to? The gentleman.
Doesn't matter, no names.
No, no, on the, from the.
Oh, George Hetron.
Oh, the Pepin.
Yeah.
The Pepin.
Hetron.
Hetron, Hetron.
I, I can't, I don't know anything other than what I've experienced the last two and a half years. I don't know what else to look for, okay? And even the same conversation I have with Ms. King today. I only know what I know.
I think that dovetails, though, what we talked about the last time. If someone has gone through this process before, they worked with a prior town administrator when they hired Greg, for example, or they worked with a prior administrator before they hired Greg's predecessor. So I think that's exactly.
I think there's also some merit having people who've worked closely with Greg.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, which is everyone.
But I think that we're included in that cohort, and we're making the ultimate decision, so. I think the screening committee is an opportunity to get different thinking, and as long as it's a diverse group of different thinkers. But I do think experience is helpful, either having hired leaders in the private sector or, and/or having gone through this process before.
I will add, Greg, I think your opinion carries a lot of weight here.
Absolutely.
Because you're the one that's gone through this personally for a career.
Right.
And gone through those changes, and I'd be interested to put some pen to paper. And gone through those changes and I'd be interested to put some pen to paper and say, here are a couple of aspects.
To what I think you should.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, be happy to.
Yeah.
Plus you'll be involved with, uh, deeply involved with transition.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
He's, he's gone through it and he says, this is how they made the tris, decisions, and of course, everyone was the right one that you went to, or maybe not. You know, I'm not gonna be something there, but.
There's probably a couple of misses.
Okay.
So is that something, um, because I do think it's important we have some criteria in front of us before we talk names at the next meeting. So is that something you want to send to us, um, as far as draft criteria or whatever, in an email? Or I just, just trying to understand the process here. When, when does the screening committee actually have to be stood up by?
So they should be functional mid-February.
Functional mid-February, okay. So for example, another criteria we might consider is, is it important for them to, I remember we talked about this in the past, be here physically to conduct interviews of potential candidates? Or is, you know, Zoom acceptable if they happen to be a snowbird? I don't know if any snowbirds have applied, but, um, so that might be a criteria we need to discuss. Do we care?
I have my feelings on that.
Well.
Well, what are they? Please share them.
I, 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 I think that a lot is lost on Zoom.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
I think that, uh, you can read an awful lot about a person face-to-face, look in the eye, burn the eye. And I, if I had my druthers, I would stay away from Zoom.
So preference might be for people who can be here in person, physically be here. Okay, so that's another example criteria, um, experience. Any other particular type of experience you might consider as far as?
How are we gonna get to the experience thing? Because, I mean, we don't know everything everybody's done over their lifetime.
This is my point, right? So if there's something we want to know.
I think the people who are fine give you a resume.
Well, I don't, do we, do we though?
A letter of intent is what was requested, or a letter of interest.
Yeah, a letter of interest, yeah. To serve on the screening committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who screens the screeners?
I'm assuming you'll interview them.
Yeah, so, so Greg is saying, the assumption is we will interview them, like we do the candidates for other committees. So we'll get an opportunity to ask them those questions.
Let's go through it one by one and.
Right, so my, my only suggestion is we should kind of think about what those questions are in advance so we're not looking at a person we know and really like and.
Find out they're not gonna be here.
Find out they're not the right.
Because I suspect everybody on the list, we know.
I suspect everybody on the list we know and like, so.
Between the five of us, we all know somebody.
Right.
I think all of us probably know all of the folks, you know, I just think I know what the list is.
I think perhaps what we like to consider is doing the interviews in one meeting and perhaps maybe having an interim meeting if, if the schedule requires it. So that we talk to the people and think about it for a few days rather than having to make the decision.
No, I think it's a special meeting.
Yeah, that's.
I think this isn't too important to try to.
Hey, what's the future of the town?
Right, exactly.
It's the most important decision we'll make this year.
I'm willing to cut about a couple more hours of my time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a couple.
So we're going to get Greg's recommendations, why don't, Kathy has given us several good ideas. Any suggestions to Greg and then Greg can send something.
Consolidate that with.
Yeah.
Whatever else she got that's good.
It is, it is fair.
Yeah.
So are we suggesting then that we would begin to interview candidates at our meeting on the twenty-first? I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, that's what I was assuming.
Okay, yeah.
You could have a special meeting to do the interviews.
I prefer to see a special meeting. I think it's, I, I don't.
So right now, we have like eight or nine candidates.
For both?
Four slots.
Both slots combined.
Four slots.
Okay.
That's gonna take up a good part of a night if you do it right.
Yeah, if you're doing ten minutes a person, which is short, that's.
I think, I'd like to find. How many, how many Mondays do we have in this?
Well, so if I could suggest, maybe at the next.
Next Monday is a planning board meeting of some significance. But maybe to do it on a Thursday.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that our next meeting be on refining the criteria. Like you're gonna consolidate what the feedback that we give you. Do we want to have a discussion on that before we start talking to people? Because what we might want to do is, once we go through Greg's list with our enhancements, give that to the nine people who have sent letters of interest. Here's what we're looking for. You may have some people that self-select out, or at least they will be better prepared for the interview, right?
So.
So a special meeting.
After the twenty-first.
After the twenty-first.
Twenty-third or the thirtieth.
Yeah, these are the two Thursdays.
Are you going to the MMA, the Connect twenty-one, the Monday or the twenty-third?
Twenty-third doesn't, yeah, twenty-third doesn't work.
Yeah, twenty-third's not working for me either.
Thirty is like, I can do the thirtieth, I'm open.
You can't do the twenty-seventh?
What is?
Like is that a Monday? I know it's a planning board meeting on the twenty-seventh, but.
Planning board, the town meets twice a month, so twenty-seventh should be okay.
Oh, should be open?
Yeah.
So that's a Monday night, the twenty-seventh, is that?
Yeah, that's.
Doable?
That's doable.
That's a good day.
Planning board is a meeting the twenty-seventh?
I thought the planning board.
Second fourth.
Second fourth, I saw.
Second and fourth, okay, so, right, no.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can do the thirtieth, I just wasn't sure if Monday was up.
Okay, we can meet earlier.
I can do the thirtieth or the twenty-seventh either one.
Well, the twenty-seventh, I mean, but we're talking, if we do it early, how early is early? And, I mean, we're talking a couple of hours, right?
Right.
I just rather than try to do it early and try to get it done before something else, I prefer to have it all over the night than the thirtieth.
Yeah, I, I prefer, yeah, I can't be too early on the twenty-seventh, I can be regular time.
Thirtieth wasn't good, why? That's a, that's a fifth Thursday, that's a fifth Thursday, you know, once you get into the fifth of any.
There's not a lot of competition.
Yeah, that's not competition, that's why I wonder.
Okay, is that, that will work with the schedule?
Yes, yes, so then, then you would have a regular meeting that following Monday where you could make the, the decisions, make the selections.
Brilliant.
Wow.
All right, so we're calling it the thirtieth, calling for the thirtieth.
Hang on a second, I thought so, I'm sorry.
We still need some time to talk about what the criteria are.
Right, so which date are we doing?
Do that on the twenty-first.
That's the twenty-first.
That's the twenty-first, okay, sorry.
And then you meet on the thirtieth to do the interviews.
So interviews are on the thirtieth.
Yes.
You got it.
And then on February third, your regular meeting is when you would make your actual selections.
Okay.
May or may not be here.
Would you be in Zoom?
So what time are we meeting on the?
I'm British Columbia skiing somewhere.
Uh, thirtieth?
No, it's the week of, of February first, second, I leave the first and I'm going for the week.
Okay, but I don't think we'd be pulling you off the slopes early.
You wouldn't, except that I'm in a car because I'm moving around in various.
Well, you've done asking for it.
So I don't. Yes, yes, yes. These are very irreverent people I ski with, so. We'll see, we'll see what happens.
So we talk from six-thirty or for the thirtieth?
The thirtieth.
Six-thirty works for me.
That's on the thirtieth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe your rim line skaters could have a beer while you were.
That's easy, convince. I think it worked out, Monday, I'd know where I'm at, not a long, not a long drive.
Okay, so we've got a schedule for criteria, a schedule for interviews, a schedule for decision.
Right, so if we just, people have thoughts on criteria, why don't you give them to them?
Yeah, the next few days.
Few days.
Okay.
And, uh, and then I'll, I'll put together a list.
All right, um, and I will, I will ask Callan if he'd like to be involved. If that's, if that one has a long history with the town.
Yeah, he's seen a couple of championships.
Yeah, that sounds like.
Yeah, no, he's.
I, I, I don't, I don't know whether he's going to be interested, but.
No.
That, as Greg pointed out, we bring committee eight, so there's possibly a deadlock. I think if we have a deadlock in that committee, then we need to look harder for candidates.
Alan would have the longest perspective of everything.
Right.
Okay. Please, some updates. I got, I got nothing.
Nothing? I got something. Um, DPW, I think we should all be aware, uh, on the water meter issue, the RFP that Chuck is sending out for, I guess, three or four bids to come in on supplying the waters, that's, he expects to send that out this week. That's gonna come back over the next two or three weeks. I think the bottom line is, is that the water bills that go out in February will have, will start to have this twenty-five dollar hit for a water meter that nobody has yet. Okay, so there may be some calls that will be coming in, hey, what's this twenty-five dollar bill? Nobody's doing anything, what am I getting for my month? So I think we need to be aware of that. I know that the DPW department probably will be, because there will be a few people that will call. But, uh, just need to be aware of that. The library will get its decision Friday on whether it wins.
Is it supposed to be announced Friday?
Application, it's supposed to be announced Friday.
Okay.
And we are one of, I think, I think are gonna be two winners. I think there are five applicants in our size category.
In our category.
In our category, and I think maybe there's, there might be two or something, but it's competitive, let's just say, that's it. So we'll know, the library will know how things will fit together for, this is money for, um, the planning stage for the library rehab, et cetera. And nothing with the seniors in particular, and the historic commission meets this Thursday, there's nothing. No further news with regard to what's going on at, um, at, uh, the cargo.
Except it's empty.
Except it's empty, so something will happen, we thought they might come back to us this month.
We, based, and I, I had an opportunity to chat with Sarah at Essex before the ZB A because they're changing you.
Uh, it's a change of use, although that use is on the list, but just because you're changing, it's not like that.
She hasn't, she hasn't seen anything yet.
I understand, yeah. So that's two, it's got the district commission and, uh, and then.
Jeff, anything?
Uh, nothing, Thursday night, I will be at Essex Tech for the grand opening of the, um, Black and Cottage.
Really?
It's been a long, yeah, it's finally, pretty much done, yeah. Well, it's been a long-term project for the kids and whatnot, so hopefully I'll get some pictures and post them, but, uh, yeah, should be good.
All right, good.
Meetings.
Uh, Cox and Rec is running like a, running like a top.
Excellent. Okay. Oh. The consent agenda? I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Session.
John?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Administrators.
Um, yeah, just a few, few updates. Uh, we will have the parking review, uh, during next meeting, just want a little more time to meet with Todd and Cheryl. Just to get everyone on the same page and get like that, a presentation ready, so we'll have that for you on the twenty-first. Um, we're anxious to get the final sign-offs for the covert project here so that we can move forward. Thought we were there, but not, um, so we continue to work on that, it's a priority and, um, I hope to have better news next time.
Have there at least been meetings? Because I thought at one point we had difficulty getting the lawyer or the party.
Right, there are at, at least some communications happening, it's still about this.
Deadline again, before we lose six million dollars?
So it's not a hard and fast deadline, but we will, if we don't push the permitting process through, we will lose the timing to, for fall construction. If we don't start construction, the fall that jeopardizes the funding. So I, I can't say definitively we use it, but it puts it into question.
Nate says he's gotta go out to bid soon.
Right, right, we can't go out to bid until we know what the permit requirement's off.
So do we have any more clarity as to what the business owner is looking for?
So, um, I believe we have responded positively to everything they have asked for.
Are new things getting added every time we respond? Or are they not understanding our response, or are they not agreeing with our response?
They're not agreeing, they're not agreeing to what we have said, and we don't understand why. We do not have clarity as to what the problem is.
I had a conversation with her a few days before Christmas and it sounded like this was all set, so I'm kind of surprised that.
The Friday before Christmas, I thought it was all set, and then Christmas Eve, I was told by her lawyer that, no, it's, the deal's off. And I wasn't told why. So there's been further communication since then and we've asked for a definitive redlining of what we last proposed.
Yeah.
Asked for that for tomorrow or Wednesday. That's where it is.
All right, will keep us, I guess.
I'm not understanding.
Yeah, I don't either, because I talked to her.
I talked to her.
It seemed like it was, I talked about the red line, it sounded like it was ready to go, so.
And, and again, if, if the preference is to do more talking about the easement, all we need for now is the chapter ninety-one form signed.
Right.
We can take more time on the easement, but the desire was to wrap it all up, which we were happy to do.
Right. I, that's, I got the impression from her that she was too, but maybe, I don't know what happened, so can't speak to that, but.
So I'm very anxious that this come together, because there's a lot riding on it, it's represented, eight, eight years of work on this project.
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, it's gonna go back to him.
I.
Are tenants aware of this whole situation?
Oh, yeah, I very well aware.
What are their feelings on it? Do they have a feeling of it?
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't have to say, but.
It's not positive.
Yeah, no, it's that my.
Let's put it that way.
And I wasn't gonna argue when we had a pair of assistants in here.
I just asked if that could be a constituency that would be helpful here or not.
I was thinking maybe this week and then.
But when is the deadline you gave her, Wednesday? I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to.
So you were gonna meet over the.
Ten was the deadline I gave them.
For the redlining?
For, for a deal.
For a deal, okay.
So we've asked for, the lawyer said he would try to get a redline to us by the end of business tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
At this point, you just have a request to meet, but you do not have a response from them.
So the lawyer came back and said, we need next Thursday, the sixteenth, and I said, that's too late, we need it sooner than that.
Okay, and that's where it stands right now, so you're looking for another date.
So and then he said he would try to get a redline version to us to find out the business tomorrow.
Okay, is this the first time we've had a redline from them?
We have never had a redline, we keep giving them versions and they keep saying, uh.
Okay, so this is the first, so this is progress because they've actually, the lawyer actually said he would get a redline by tomorrow. And that's, that's not, that is something they have never said before, okay, so that's, you take the win where you can, but.
It's not a win.
But it's not a win, but it's a step in the right direction, but I, I think, all right, so.
So I have asked the engineers to see if there's an alternative that avoids the property altogether.
Yeah.
And they're working on that as well.
Good, okay.
We will see.
Plan B is always good, that's great.
Well, can you let us know if you don't have something this week?
Yes, I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Definitely keep you posted.
How likely is a plan B?
Yeah, and do they know there's a plan B?
They will know.
I mean, that's, that's.
There's a finite amount of space between.
Right. Chuck's comment earlier today was, you know, anything's, anything's integratable, it's just a matter of cost. So I'll compare that cost to the delay, and I mean, it'd be worth it, frankly.
Yeah, I would think so, definitely.
If it's a clear go.
Yep.
I don't, I mean, within reason, I don't care how much more.
It's not gonna be $6 million, probably.
They should, at some point, they should know this.
As soon as I get confirmation.
Well, that was.
That was the first, that became the first thing, then it was, then I was reading the draft agreement and dedicated parking and all kinds of stuff.
It just, it just keeps, the goalpost keeps.
Yeah, I like the plan B option, I hope that works.
Yeah.
What a, give a background.
Yeah, we'll see.
It's confusing at best. Salting at worst.
We're talking less than 100 square feet for permanent leases, it's, it's minimal.
Yeah.
We could do away with half of, we could get away with 50 square feet. So maybe we can eliminate that last 50 square feet.
By real high.
Five by 10 area, that's what we're talking about. Say two. So obviously, annual town meeting, the elections are scheduled April 28th for the annual town meeting, which means the deadline for petition articles is February 27th, 60 days ahead.
So what was the?
Petition articles are due February 27th. And the election will be, the 20th is the date. And papers are now available for the various positions that are open. We have housing. No, no, state, state, safer.
Undoubtedly. Undoubtedly.
And you're told, Kristi, I'll be, I'll be one of them.
Yes, I will be as well.
So we have three constables.
Very good news.
So the three constable positions are up. The housing authority has one slot, as does the library trustees. We all know the moderator position will be vacant and open.
Is there any, is there any interest at all? You've heard any kind of rumble?
No, it has come to me to talk about it. So I think that's one that deserves some attention, some conversations appropriate. Free planning board positions, and then two, two more that we share.
Free planning boards?
Free planning boards. Because one was a.
What about school committee?
Two.
Oh, I'm sorry, and two school committees, yep.
Individual and our expense.
So that's, that's where we are. There is, because we have changed town meeting, the data.
It's later.
Pushed it forward, it's later, closer to the election, close enough that you can have one warrant. We have always had two warrants, a warrant for the town meeting and a warrant for the, the election. So traditions, as we keep, we stick with the two-warrant approach, you can consolidate, create one warrant. It means one registration date, last day for registering to be on the voter list.
Okay, so what that means is, if we have one warrant, we would be excluding some people from the election who would otherwise be able to vote in the election?
It would be a, an earlier registration deadline than we're used to.
Yeah, yeah.
For, for elec, for elections. So we can keep it the same, there's no, there's no.
Is there any cost savings to the town?
Minimal.
Okay.
No.
But if it was phenomenal or something like that, we want to, but my miss was successful.
Yeah.
It, it means, I think, that we, does it mean that we can reflect the decisions at town meeting in the warrant? So for example, if we have a borrowing.
No, I mean, those, those have to be, the.
Ballot?
The ballot articles need to be sent prior to our town meeting.
Fine. Essex seems to be able to do that.
Yeah, basically, you put it out, assuming it's gonna pass, and if it doesn't pass, it, it just becomes a moot issue, you know? You don't count the vote, if people vote on it at the ballot.
And this is, so annual, it's 10 signatures for a citizen petition?
Yes.
And what does the warrant have to be finalized, just, I'm sorry?
So the warrant gets finalized, it has to be posted by the April 7th, I believe. Check that. First, early April is the warrant, final deadline.
Three weeks.
Yeah, I think it's 21 days, three weeks.
Six or one half of them. More important, where's Debbie?
Yeah, she's got the flu.
For a while.
Both her and her husband are out for the count at the moment. I hope they're doing a little better than they were a couple of days ago. So lastly, just that, your next meeting will be Tuesday instead of Monday because of Martin Luther King holiday, yep.
Oh, right, and Erica Yams that day.
So that's, that's all I have.
Question to return?
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Wow, this is impressive. Erica, thank you for coming.
Yes.